I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 4th, meeting of the San Jose County Board of Commissioners to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business is opening your reading of bids, noting there are none. Move on to reports and requests. First is the accounts payable docket. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Now we move on to one of our favorite parts of our Board of Commissioner meeting, and that is recognizing and celebrating an employee of the month. Commissioner Fleming.
Yes, I just want to know, Rachel, you want to come up and say anything about our employee of the month?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, I just want to let you know that the employee of the month is Tara here? Oh, yeah, there she is. Kara Alderfer, and I was going to let Rachel comment about you, so please do. Go ahead, hon.
Sure. Hi, Rachel Rawls, Purdue Extension County Extension Director. Kara Alderfer is our Ag and Natural Resources Secretary and Business Office Manager. She's been with us almost for three years now, and she does everything for us. So when there is a program support staff person missing in another program area, she's always happy to help and pick up other programs as well, always just asking what she can do for other people. So we're really happy to celebrate Kara this morning. Thank you.
Well, and then we were happy to appoint her as employee of the month. So very, okay. So it says it's be it known that as its fourth day of May 2021, the Board of Commissioners of San Jose County, Indiana, and the city of South Bend hereby confer this award upon Kara Alderfer in recognition of her dedication to the Purdue Extension Office and in particular, the 4-H Youth Development Program. So yes, very good. Thank you for coming up here. Yes, well, this is for you, and here's stuff in here for you too. Employee of the month. Yay.
Are there any nominations?
The nomination of Matthew Parmelli. Does that even pronounce her last name?
Parmelli, I would imagine.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of appointing Matthew Parmelli to the Animal Control Commission of San Jose County for a three-year term that will end May 4th, 2024, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have appointment to the Judicial Nominating Committee. Are there? I will now open up nominations.
Do you want me to say all three of the nominations?
That would be lovely.
Okay. Our first nomination is James O'Brien. Second nomination, Joseph Graeble. Third nomination is Dr. Teresa, how do you pronounce her last name?
I believe it's Crewtherd.
Crewtherd, that's what I thought, too. Dr. Teresa Crewtherd. Those are our three nominations.
A second, though.
A second. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll now close nominations. All those in favor of appointing James O'Brien, Joseph Graeble, and Dr. Teresa Crewtherd to the Judicial Nominating Committee of San Jose County, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Counselor.
Yes, related to this is Resolution R-162021, appointing the members to the San Jose Judicial Nominating Commission. I know that you just did that, but as part of the new law that was enacted, there are certain reporting requirements to the Indiana Secretary of State and in other governmental units as to who these members are. I think the easiest way and the most formal way that we can document that in writing is by adopting this resolution, just memorializing that James O'Brien, Joseph Graeble, and Dr. Teresa Crewtherd have been appointed to the newly constituted Judicial Nominating Commission. So we have this for the records of the county as well to send to other entities as required by law.
So does it require any other formal action by this board other than signature since we've already nominated them?
I think you should make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-16C-2021.
Any questions or comments related to the resolution? Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Move to approve. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have Resolution R-15C-2021, a no-vax passport. I do want to, before we open this up for comment to the public, I want to say we're making a tweak to our address requirements. So when individuals would like to speak, all they need to do is state their name and the city in which they reside, in the state, I guess, if it's outside of Indiana. But we are no longer requiring a street address. All right. The Resolution R-15C-2021 is a resolution addressing the topic of vaccination passports in San Jose County. Do either one of my commissioners want to give a bit more context and color to this? Go ahead, Dr. Fleming.
Oh, well, I'm very excited about moving forward with this, make sure that we don't have those passports for the vaccine so that people can be free and do what they have to do, need to do, want to do, and not be limited because of that and not be forced to do that. So that's just my recommendation. I'm glad that our state had passed that so far, too. So hoping that we're supporting that through our county. So I appreciate that so much.
Yes, I'd like to also say thanks to all the citizens who have given us a lot of mail and advice and things like that. So again, I appreciate it. I'm fully in support of this. Counselor, your thoughts?
I think Commissioner Fleming covered a lot of the territory, that the state did enact legislation at the end of its session that dealt with vaccine passports. And by adopting this resolution, you're merely, the county would merely be confirming its support of not having any passports enacted here in San Jose County. Just looking at the text of the resolution, it would prohibit any government mandate or any action by business that operates a place of public accommodation from requiring any disclosure of private health information on vaccine status as part of entering said business or conducting said business there. So in many ways, the state's covered this ground already, but you can certainly take action today if it's the desire of the commissioners.
All right, I will now open it up. Has anyone wished to speak related to this topic? And for those who-
Hi, oops, sorry. Hello. This is Amy Drake. I live in Granger. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to take a moment to encourage you to vote yes on this vaccine passport resolution. As you know, our county has been particularly hit hard by an overreaching health department. They issued what was probably the first mask order in our state, which we later learned was illegal. They threatened to roll back our economy when local cases started to decline. And at one point, they wanted to issue a 10:00 PM curfew. More recently, as you all know, Dr. Einters demonstrated just how out of touch he is with our community when he went against all our local officials who wanted to end our local mandate and reissued it anyway. By passing this resolution today, you are helping to put this community on offense. For too long, we've been fighting against overbearing restrictions. It's time we stepped up and say we're done and preempt any more crazy ideas being pushed on our population. We're at herd immunity. Huge numbers of us have either had the virus or the vaccine. Anyone still nervous can protect themselves with a vaccine. But for the rest of us, we want to get on our, with our lives and without any more limitations. By passing this resolution today, you're making an important statement that our governors are echoing across the nation, that vaccine passports are a bad idea for a free society. To shut someone out of a business or a venue because they're not vaccinated is discriminatory. All of us have personal reasons for taking or not taking the vaccine. Some of us don't even need it because we're naturally immune. To say that only the vaccinated in our community can enjoy all the privileges of our society is un-American and it's coercive. For so many of us, COVID is not even a serious threat. We need to stop over-exaggerating this illness and move forward. By passing this resolution today, you are encouraging San Joe County to engage in this important conversation and consider the damage vaccine passports could do by splitting our community in two. So thank you very much, commissioners, for bringing this up today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I see Ms. Havens is, would like to speak.
There, I think I unmuted. Kelly Havens, Granger. Yeah, I'm very impressed with the text of this resolution. You cover a lot of territory there, and it's hopefully a model for other local governments all over the state to consider doing as well. I believe what you're doing here is protecting our rights to our own bodies, which men, women, young, and old all need to have in America. So thank you so much for doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I believe Jen would like to speak as well.
Hi, my name's Jen Towers. I will be brief. I support what both Amy and Kelly have said, and I thank you for bringing this to the table, and I encourage you to support this resolution. Thank you very much. Oh, sorry, did I say Granger? Jen Towers, Granger, Indiana.
Thank you. And I believe Maggie DeMegg.
Good morning, Mr. President. Commissioners Fleming and Dieter, I'm here today to ask the three of you to vote in favor of Resolution Number R-15-C-2021, the no-vax passport resolution. I realize this is a non-binding resolution, but it is a strong statement that the individual has the right to choose what is in the best interest of him or herself, and that choice will not be subject to the loss of rights and freedoms, including the right of patient privacy, which we all hold so dear. I understand vaccines for diseases such as polio, chickenpox, mumps, and measles, among others, are required for school and travel. So why not the COVID vaccines? Because the COVID vaccines have not yet been approved by the FDA. They are still experimental, and no one knows their long-term effects. It is time, commissioners, right now, to let your constituents and, in fact, the state of Indiana know that you will stand for the individual whose rights are far more precious than the dictates of some local county employees. I ask that you please vote in favor of this resolution not to require vax passports, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brandon Bumbow, Granger. I just want to say I really appreciate the statement that you guys are making, voting for this, really regardless of whether something is a good idea or not. I think it's incredibly creepy that anybody right now is worrying about involuntary medical intervention. You know, the idea of forced medical treatment is pretty horrifying. That goes back to, you know, all the lobotomies and everything that we've dealt with historically. You know, you just don't go, well, this is the best science we have. It's a good idea, therefore, everyone has to do it, and we'll tie you down and make it happen. So I just think this is a very powerful statement about good intentions in terms of liberty and, you know, saying, we aren't going to say we know best. You make that decision. So I appreciate the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you. Dan Caruso, 305 Compton Street, New Carlisle. I do not have a problem with this, the position of the commissioners and all the speakers here today. My only issue is there's always been the no shoes, no shirt, no service option available to owners of businesses, and I feel it should be the same with no masks, no service. People who wish not to wear a mask where there's a sign on the door, the same as it would be with being vaccinated or carrying the vaccine passport to enter that store, if the owner of the business wishes them to show a vaccine passport or some proof of vaccine as they go, as they go to shop in that store, the owner of the business should have the right to say, you can't shop here. Shop elsewhere if there's a sign on the door saying, you need a vaccine, you need a mask. You need something to be, to prove that you are as clean as me, the owner of the business would like to say, I've taken every protection against my, against my employees becoming sick, against somebody who may be infected coming in here without a mask or without proof of a vaccine. But I do, I do not object to this, to this resolution today. Thanks so much, and everybody be safe.
Thank you. Maureen?
Hello, I just wanted to add my voice to all these other voices that are just like really happy that you guys are protecting our rights. I can kind of relate to what Dan is saying about wanting businesses to have the autonomy to make their own rules, at the same time as I would be really hesitant to support something like that, especially considering that the vaccine is readily available to the population at large. At this point, anybody who wants it can get it for free. And if you, like, want to protect yourself with a vaccine, you can, and I think that's a very good thing that we have that option. There's people out there like me who, I'm a Catholic mom, I have four kids, and I am almost always either nursing or pregnant, and I know that the vaccine is contraindicated in nursing and pregnant people. And so I really, really appreciate just the peace of mind of there not being vaccine passports that would really limit what I'm able to take my kids to go do. It doesn't just affect, like, us adults, these kinds of things. It affects really the whole community. So I really appreciate you, the steps you're taking to protect our rights.
Thank you. Lisa?
My name is Lisa Tykhanovich. I'm in Mishawaka, and I want to thank all the council for doing this. I would just like to add that it, you know, this is still an experimental vaccine, and it has caused a lot of problems and side effects for people and everything. So we must assure that we prevent medical apartheid. It does not become, and make sure it does not become a fabric of our society. You would certainly not tolerate exclusion of a patron based upon their race, ethnicity, religion, sex, orientation, or physical or mental handicap. Doing the same based upon someone's medical status is no different. Any claim to protection of people is merely a red herring, as anyone in fear or in risk, in a risk category, all have access to the vaccine if that is their choice. So they are protected. But this cannot come to their desire to impose their choice on others who object for health or moral reasons. We are looking to you, our representatives, to protect our choice, not to take an experimental medication, protect our medical privacy, and prevent medical discrimination upon false pretenses, and to help protect our liberty and freedom which the United States stands for. Thank you so much for doing this, and I agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca is next.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I just want to say I support this resolution, and I commend you for bringing it forward. It's really great. Thank you for helping to preserve our freedoms. It is very important that health decisions are not mandated and forced upon us. I also wanted to say that I know many people who share my views but cannot be here to voice them, and just again, thank you so much for your leadership.
Thank you. Those are the people that I saw online. If you would like to speak, please have to be unmuted. You can either put a message, or you could use the raise your hand feature. Is there anyone else that would like to speak relating to this? All right, hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to speak. Sorry, I didn't throw my name in the list. My name is Stephen Whitmer, Eastern San Joe County, Osceola. First of all, I want to thank commissioners for your leadership during this overreach of COVID misinformation. I also urge you to vote yes on the vaccine passport resolution to stop the overreach of local unelected health department employees. And due to the high survival rate of this virus, which I contracted and was able to shake off without hospitalization, the youth in this country are being forced to wear these masks, and they are virtually almost immune to this virus. It just breaks my heart to see two- and three-year-old children being forced to wear masks during this time. I know safety and caution is a big one, but this whole thing has been mishandled. But I do want to thank you commissioners for your stand, your input, and helping with the liberties that we all enjoy and love. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you. Deborah and Estella.
So actually, that's my daughter's name. This is Brenda Harold. Thank you. I'm from South Bend, and I just want to add my voice in thanks and gratitude that you have presented this resolution and want to encourage you to move forward with it. Thanks.
Thank you. Rochelle?
Hi, this is Deborah. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Deborah Hancock in South Bend. I just wanted to, as well, thank you so much for being proactive and putting forth this resolution. I never dreamed that this would be something we'd be talking about and considering, but based on everything we're seeing, it obviously is happening in different places. So I just appreciate all of you commissioners so much for putting this forward and being proactive. And I would just really ask that you vote yes on it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rochelle?
Good morning. This is Rochelle Gibler. I'm from South Bend, and I'm just so delighted that to see this resolution being put forward. I think there's so much misinformation out there for people to make a determination on whether they should have the vaccine or shouldn't have the vaccine. So we live under this cloud, and of course, we want our rights protected. Anybody who is uncertain about these effects, they can go to the Vaccine Adverse Advance Reporting System on the CDC and find that there are over 3,000 deaths that have been reported and 86,000 adverse effects, and over 10,000 of those being very, very serious. So because this vaccine is experimental and it includes a synthetic genetic piece to this, you know, we need to wait until there are long-term studies for all of our health. And I just want to say that I'm delighted again, and thank you so very, very much for being in support of this vaccine.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, a final call for public comments. Thank you for everyone who both spoke today and the emails and text messages and phone calls that we received as well for, it's great to have citizens express their opinion to us. All right, if there are no further questions or comments from the board, is there a motion?
A motion to approve this Resolution R-15-C-2021 for the no-vax passport.
Second.
We have motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. All right, moving on to engagement of appraisers, the archive building. Counselor?
Yes, sir. To engage here, to engage attorney, or sorry, appraiser Steve Sonnen in Iverson Grove to conduct appraisals for the property that currently houses the archives. I know there's discussions ongoing as to whether the county should acquire that property or not. As part of the acquisition process, we need to have the property appraised by two independent appraisers. The maximum the county could pay for the property would be the average of those two appraisals. So by these engagements, you'd be moving that process forward.
Any questions or comments?
After that's done, do you have a ballpark figure of how long, much longer that takes to-
That's going to deal with your appraiser as to whether they, or your real estate professional that's dealing with the transaction, and then sitting down with the owner, saying, here's the amount that we can pay. Is this acceptable to you, or should we pay that amount? So there's, those are things to work through if you're a real estate professional, but it shouldn't take long. I'm talking 30 to 60 days, Mr. Dieter.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this appraisers agreement.
Second.
Motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Moving on, adult probation request approval to apply for grant funds through Indiana Office of Court Services and through the Indiana Supreme Court.
Good morning, and thank you, commissioners. Jesse Carlton, Chief Probation Officer with the Adult Probation Department, offices located here on the fourth floor of the county city building. The first request through the Indiana Office of Court Services is for a grant that we have received in the past. This funds our pre-trial services division. It includes a supervisor probation officer, one line officer, and three contracted part-time public defenders that represent the arrestees at their bail hearings. Be happy to answer any questions about this grant.
I'm going to touch on the other grant as well, and then we can knock this out in one.
Absolutely. Perfect. The second one is the Indiana Supreme Court. It is for our problem-solving courts, so our drug court and our veterans' court program. These funds are used to supplement our drug testing abilities, so that way we can test for additional drugs of abuse.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Can we do this whole thing then?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve both of these grant requests.
Second.
Motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth. Bid request S-58062516, small structure replacement, Inwood Road over Nesbitt Johnny Ditch and Strawberry Road over unnamed tributary to Nesbitt Johnny Ditch Bridge replacement.
Sky Metters, county engineer, offices on the seventh and 11th floor of this building. What you have before you today is a request to advertise for bids for the replacement of two small structures at the intersection of Inwood Road and Strawberry Road. One of those structures on Inwood Road is over Nesbitt Johnny Ditch, and the other on Strawberry Road is over a tributary to Nesbitt Johnny Ditch. We have reviewed this and request your permission to advertise this project for bid.
Questions or comments? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve this grant, or I'm sorry, bid request.
Second.
Motion to second. Of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you, Sky.
Thank you.
Lastly, bid request for New Carlisle Town Loop Fiber Project. Mr. Bill?
Good afternoon. Bill Shalley, Economic Development Director with Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth with offices on the seventh and 11th floor. Before you today is a request to begin the process to advertise for the New Carlisle Town Loop. It's part of the fiber project, as part of the larger EDA project that we've been working on. We're building a 24-mile, 27, 24-mile fiber project. We'll pull 27 miles of fiber within that. But as we've been working on the project, we've determined that there's a 1.4-mile loop within the town that we also want to build as part of the larger fiber project we're doing. This project will be done entirely separate to the other, but needs to be bid and as opposed to quoted. So the engineer's estimate puts us into a position to bid. We'd like to advertise for bidding on May 7th and May 14th, opening bids on May 25th and awarding the project on June 1st. The redevelopment is approved. The redevelopment has approved funding for this project and has approved this project. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Has the town of...I assume the town of New Carlisle is in favor of this?
They are indeed. I believe, and I would also note, just for the record, if you've read the recent report about the IEC, one of the provisions within it is that we should bring high-speed internet to the town of New Carlisle. So, I would say that we have read the recommendations and are working to incorporate those in our daily activities.
Excellent.
I have another question. Could you expound on the...after this, what...how that will affect the community and households and businesses out there?
Certainly. So, what we'd like...what this project will do, and there's a map that's included in it, this will go from Timothy Road over to Bray Street, which is where the library and the school are, up to Michigan Street. Actually, we'll split because we couldn't run it down Michigan Street through the central core. We're running through the alleys to service both the north and south sides of the street. So, one of the things the Redevelopment Commission is doing with Choice Light as a partner, finding ways to provide connectivity fees at a reduced rate, also finding ways to partner on a residential-level service so that the town residents would have the opportunity to connect, also with a residential speed and component. So, those are part of the activities we're working on.
Okay. I appreciate it. Good job. Thank you.
Glad we were able to help that area, that's for sure.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve this bid request.
Second.
Motion to second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion passes. I think it's just another example of the county participating and partnering with different local units of government in areas across the county to try and provide increased services to those areas, despite what others might say to the contrary. Moving on to old business, seeing none, public comments. Are there any public comments? Seeing and hearing none, a motion to recess is in order.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Tough luck. We are recessed. Have good days.